All right, good morning, everyone. It's 11:00 AM. I'll call the meeting of the Board of Select, uh, the Select Board to order for December 16th, 2021. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Bogart, would you read our community prayer?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. We may, we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we've been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Uh, we are here this morning for a discussion of possible vote to appoint an interim town administrator and to designate a subcommittee for the purpose, and I would really call that a negotiating team, for the purpose of negotiating a contract with the interim town administrator contingent upon successful background and reference checks. Um, and before we start, I do have a couple of announcements. First of all, I just want to publicly thank, uh, Area 58, uh, person yesterday, Chris Gardner. Uh, he spent all day here, seven plus hours, and he, after leaving, he went back to the Area 58 studios and got that, the whole meeting up and running so Mr. Belvin could, who's on vacation in Hawaii, and thank you for joining us, Mr. Belvin. Uh, so he was able to review the meetings that he didn't have a chance to, uh, to see yesterday. So I, I think that was just extraordinary, and I appreciate that very much. So I wanted to thank him. Also, uh, we did have one applicant that messed with us, met with us yesterday, Thomas Guarino, who has withdrawn. So he will, he is no longer a, an applicant for the position. So with that, uh, I thought the method we used last time we picked an interim town administrator went pretty smoothly and, and enabled us to sort of narrow the field down a little bit. We did interview seven people yesterday. Uh, now Mr. Guarino has withdrawn, so that brings us now to six. But even six is quite a number to go back and forth with. So I thought what we would do is perhaps go around the room. We could all put forth our two or if need be, three, uh, preferred candidates, and hopefully that will bring us to a consensus where we can then discuss those folks and, uh, and come to a consensus if the board would like to offer one of them a contract. So, uh, Ms. Hewens, perhaps we could start with you?
Now, are we naming our first two or our number one?
Uh, first two or if need be, first three, or, or if you only feel there's one you want to offer a contract to, just, it could be one. But I, I just, I think it would narrow it down so we're not discussing six people all at the same time.
Right. Well, I, uh, my first choice would be Robert Reed. And my second choice would be Robert Fantasy.
Okay. Mr. Belvin, how about yourself? Uh, we, we can't hear you, Bob. You might have to unmute. Uh, we can barely hear you. Bob, we, we cannot hear you. Area 58, do you notice that some way we have to tie him into a microphone?
No, we just needed to choose the, uh, the speakers that he was gonna be using.
Okay.
Chris told me exactly which ones to choose, and it's not working.
All right. Bob, are you, are you unmuted, Bob? We can't.
Cause you don't call me.
Okay.
Microphone maybe?
Yeah, um.
You have a speaker phone maybe?
Bob, would it, maybe it'd be easier for you to call in and we could put you on a speakerphone?
I can hear through the laptop, but turn when I switch the speaker.
All right. Well, why don't we, why don't we see if we can solve the communications problem with Mr. Belvin? And Jen, Ms. Bogart, why don't we, if you don't mind, why don't we go ahead with, with you, and then we'll, we'll get back to Mr. Belvin?
Okay. Honestly, this was not easy, and it was a good not easy. I was really pleased with the candidates we had yesterday. So I really had to go back and look at my notes and think about things and, and do stuff. And in no particular order, my top two would be, uh, Robert Reed and Robert Fantasy. But this was really difficult, and I'm so happy that we had this pool of applicants to choose from.
Mr. Hoffman, how about yourself?
Like Jen said, this, I was very pleased with, um, the candidates that we had. And I just had a question, I guess, before I, I'm actually, I have three people, and I'm, and I want to cut it down to two. And I just kind of want to ask the board, um, overall, as far as what we're looking for, and then ITA versus a permanent. As far as, you know, obviously with a permanent, you want more, uh, more long range, you know, someone that would be around a little bit longer, um, someone that has, you know, some of the questions like were asked about the EMS and the, and the safety things where, you know, a lot of people, a couple guys didn't have any idea, so.
I mean, just speaking for myself, I think you're looking for very similar things from, from both. I think the difference is that this board obviously might want to restrict an interim from, you know, all drastic changes here in Town Hall or, or things like that. Obviously, we can sort of restrict what, what the interim would do, but I think as far as qualities of an interim, I think you want the same qualities that you would want in a, in a permanent town administrator. That's just for myself. I don't know if anyone else would like to?
Yeah, I, I tend to agree. I think, um, it seems, um, like a given, but I think we're looking for someone who's been a town administrator. Um, it's always helpful to know the job. Um, and, and, yeah, I mean, I think there were a number of candidates who said they weren't gonna come in here and break any china, which is good. I don't think that's what we want. Um, I think we want someone who does more than just babysit, but on the other hand, not, um, do anything really drastic, as Mr. Townsend said. So I, I tend to agree.
Yeah, ditto.
Okay, so any?
Yeah, I, I mean, like, I guess a couple of the issue, well, not issues, but that I was thinking about was, like, certain people definitely are gonna be, or they want to be a intern, where other people had intern maybe be a full-time. And again, I, I just don't want to, um.
And again, this board didn't restrict that. This board has, oh.
Correct, yeah. Okay. I'm just trying to.
And we also, if I can jump in here, we, we also can't, um, tell people whether or not they can apply for the permit.
Right, right, no. I agree 100% with that.
But they, they all know this is a syndrome at this point, so.
Right, right, exactly.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, let's see.
And we can discuss the, the merits of the applicants. It'll, I just think we should all sort of get the numbers out and see if, if there's agreement with the board of a couple of applicants. I guess that's what I'm looking to do initially.
Okay.
Can we leave this discussion? Do we need to, can someone call me on their cell phone or microphone? So you might want to have him here when you guys are saying?
Okay. Area 58, have we been able to reconnect with Mr. Belvin?
Uh, he, he left the, the room.
All right, I'm, all right. I tell you what, why don't we take a two-minute, two-minute break, and I'm gonna connect my phone with Mr. Belvin. I'm gonna try to anyway and see if I can put him up to, to our microphone, okay? We'll reset. All right, so we are, we are back in session, and, uh, Mr. Belvin was unable to connect with us via Zoom, so he's now, uh, joining us via cellphone here in my hand. And so Bob, um, what we've done is so far, we've gone around the room. Uh, I thought, just to catch you up, I think Sarah has giving, uh, given her two choices of, uh, Robert Fantasy and Robert Reed.
In the other order.
In, in the other order, I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. Bogart, in no particular order, was, I believe, the same too, correct, Ms. Bogart? Mr. Fantasy and Mr. Reed?
Yes.
And now we are up to Mr. Hoffman.
Okay.
Bob, can you hear people okay?
Can, can, can you hear okay?
They sure as they talk, I hear you, so.
Okay. Just make sure, make sure everyone, you speak into the microphone, that's all.
Okay. Bob, Bob, one of the things that I just asked before I gave my choices was what type of qualifications we're looking for for an intern versus a long-term, where this is just the interim position. Um, you know, mainly because a couple of people really wanted to be an interim only, and I know we're not gonna hold that against them, obviously, that's what we're looking for as an interim, but I just wanted to get the board's ideas on, on what they were looking for, just, uh, because to be honest with you, I have three people, and I want to narrow it down to two. So do you have any comments?
Mr. Belvin, did you hear that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did you have any comments on what Mr. Hoffman had to say?
Don't bother, I understand.
Okay. All right, Mr. Hoffman.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna narrow it down to two, and they are Robert Reed and Robert Fantasy.
All right. And how about yourself, Mr. Belvin? Did you have two choices?
We pulled it up tonight. Well, since we're all, so far, we're all the same. I have Robert Fantasy as my number one, and Robert Reed as my number two.
All right, thank you. And, uh, we are all the same because I had exactly the same, the same two, uh, as well. So maybe we can go just quickly around the room and, and talk about why we chose those two? And, um, I guess I'll make it easier, I'll, I'll start, I've got the, the phone right here, so. So a couple of different things. I thought for, for Mr. Reed, it was clear from his interview that he did not want to be the permanent town administrator. He, he, he is, does interim only, he does lots, he has lots of experience as an interim town administrator, including towns very similar to Carver. Uh, I thought all his answers were, were, were very good, that really, every, I had positives on, on just about every question we asked him. Uh, again, he has lots of experience as an interim town administrator, so he knows there are some unique challenges, I think, to being an interim and not a permanent town administrator, and I think he, it's clear he understands that. So, you know, what advantage of hiring someone who only wants to be an interim is, I think we all agreed, and we heard from the, the last town administrator screening committee, that they felt because we had an incumbent town administrator that perhaps limited the number of applicants they got for the permanent town administrator, uh, position. So I think that's an advantage to Mr. Reed. Everyone knows going in that he has no interest in being the permanent town administrator, and that could help us with more applicants for the, for the permanent job. I think as far as Mr. Fantasy, um, he had a lot of pluses as well. Uh, he also had experience as a town administrator, and he had that experience in a neighboring town, Kingston, which I think gives him some, the advantage of having some local knowledge. Uh, he had a good combination of experience. I think he had the combination of municipal and legal experience, which, you know, I think could be a real help to the, to the town. I think that's a good combination. Uh, he was the only applicant that we interviewed that mentioned the residents in a, in a number of his answers to questions. When we talked about, you know, what, what, what he thought would be a good way for the intern to begin, he talked about reaching out to, to residents in the town. He was the only applicant that did that, and I thought that was a really important thing to, to, to mention. He also talked about, you know, the, the residents when we, we asked him the budget question, and, and he talked about streamlining budgets to help take some, you know, some of the pressure off the tax rate and off residents. And listen, everyone in this row, room knows how difficult it is to streamline budgets, I think. We're pretty streamlined now, and I'm not sure there's any, gonna be much more streamlining he can do. But I thought the fact that he was thinking about it and mentioned it was, was important because, again, nobody else mentioned the residents in, in, in their, their discussion. I thought that was important that he did it. Um, he was the only applicant that took the time to read our financial policies, and I was pretty impressed by that because they're right there on our website for everyone to read. Uh, I thought he answered, uh, Ms. Bogart's question on the rural character of the town really well. Uh, he, he made a statement, I think, that sometimes the town can move faster than the town peoples, townspeople can. I thought that was a, a, a pretty compelling statement. I think it's, it can be true in, in some things. So I, I was impressed by both, and I think both could do a very good job for the town of Carver. I, I mirror Ms. Bogart's earlier comments. I, I thought it was a really good day for the town because I thought we had a lot of good applicants. And I, I will just add that I thought, uh, Mr. Sullivan, Michael Sullivan, had a very good interview as well, uh, but he had no experience as a, as a town administrator. And for that reason, I, I didn't feel that he would be a good choice for this particular position, but I thought he had a very good interview. And, um, I guess those are, those are my thoughts. Who would like to, maybe go next? Anyone in particular?
I'll go next, yeah. I, um, yeah, I appreciate what you said. I, I do beg to differ that Robert Reed did actually talk about the residents. It wasn't, uh, he didn't use that word, but had the two things he was most proud of, um, well, it sounded like there were a couple of things, but one was this community development block grant where he was able to, um, take bequests of people and create a, a COA, which is huge for residents.
Absolutely.
And put an elevator in the Town Hall, which, um, may not seem like much, but that could make a difference between people being able to get access to their government and not. So, um, I appreciated that. He, he also looked at the DOR and, and the Department of Revenue and the Department of Local Services, and he said he looked at our budget process too, over the years. So, I mean, he did do some homework on us. Um, so, but in, in a lot of ways, they were very, um, similar in terms of what their background is, what they said they could do when they got here. My only issue with Mr. Fantasy was, um, the idea that, you know, we, we needed to bring more industry here, and our zoning doesn't allow big box stores, so we can change the zoning. Well, I don't think that's what people want. And I know he probably won't, you know, be trying to do something like that, but as I've said before, a lot can happen in six months, and we haven't been to town meeting yet.
And I didn't get that, I, I would agree, that's not what the residents want, but I didn't get the impression that that was sort of his idea. I just think that he was talking about ways, perhaps, in a general area that you can.
Zoning can be changed.
You could, well, I know that, but I think, I think he was talking about ways you might be able to, you know, help the tax rate a little. I don't think he, he was necessarily advocating for those, but that's fine. Um, Mr. Belvin, would you like to go next?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Um, can we all hear, Mr. Belvin?
Yes, no?
Yeah. I think we can, and I'm holding you as close to the microphone as you can get, so.
All right. Um, I think we had a very good amount of people that were, um, that applied, uh, very vast experience, qualifications. Um, the two that I picked, uh, Mr. Fantasy first, uh, I actually watched the whole thing twice, uh, just to turn around and make sure I was right in my decision. Um, I felt Mr. Fantasy, Fantasy was, um, just spot on when he was, everything that he said was spot on. Um, his ideas of what the interim town administrator's job roles are, um, what he can do for us and what he can't do for us. Um, and I just, overall, I felt he was the strongest of the two. Mr. Reed, um, he had not a whole lot of experience to the extent that Mr. Fantasy has, um, but he had a really good interview. And, um, I mean, that's why I picked Mr. Fantasy, um, because I also picked up about residents. Going over the first time, I kind of missed it, but when I did it the second time, it clicked in. I'm like, okay, he's more in tune to, um, the residents, he's more in tune to looking at things from different perspectives. So that's why I picked Mr. Fantasy.
Okay. Thank you. Catherine, can I just ask you, you're the only member of the public we have here, can you hear Mr. Belvin okay when I hold him up to the microphone?
Yes, very clear.
Good, thank you. Okay, um, next, uh, Ms. Bell, Ms. Bogart or Mr. Hoffman, either one of you?
Okay.
Ms. Bogart?
Honestly, I'm kind of excited that we're all in a general consensus. It's, it's nice, and I feel like some of the things that I feel and we're gonna say was, was already said, so it just, I'm really happy about this. Um, they were very similar, and there was a lot of good about, about both of them. You know, looking at my notes, it's, Mr. Fantasy was familiar with Carver, which is great. Um, you know, Mr. Reed was not as familiar with it. I thought they were both, I appreciated their honesty when they didn't know something that we asked them specifically, you know, what do you know about, you know, the EMS, or what do you know about? They were very honest in saying, honestly, I don't really know that much. And that's, I don't want someone coming in here saying, mm, well, I know this, trying to, you know, get us. I, I liked, again, it's, it was very hard. Mr., Mr. Fantasy, I picked up on the thing that you mentioned, Mark, about how sometimes you will move too fast in losing rural character. And I, he said, hold on to it for as long as you can, which, that struck a chord with me. But then Mr. Reed, I really thought, based on prior conversations that we've had, he was, he really understood what we're looking for in a town administrator. You know, he said consistency, make sure deadlines aren't missed, make the transition to the full-time town administrator smooth. You know, he could do the hard stuff and, and break the ice, you know, he compared himself to a consultant, and I don't like that term, but I understood what he meant. He, he seemed to take the role of an interim seriously, and I'm familiar with some of the towns that he has worked in, um, and, and things aren't going poorly there now. So it, it was very hard, and I don't want to sound wishy-washy, but I think the town would do well with both of them. Um, just, I think in looking at it, I mean, because they both said that they wanted to show the employees that they're valued. Um, they both used that. Um, and not, Mr. Fantasy said not just the department heads. He wants all employees. And Mr. Reed said, let people know that they're valued and heard, even if they can't get what they want. So they're both great, but I think if I had to choose one, if, right now, you're like, okay, stop, we need to vote for someone, I think I would go with Mr. Reed. But they're both very strong candidates. But just, based on Mr. Reed's history, and again, in those towns, I think he, he has been a successful interim town administrator. So that's where I'm leaning, but they're both great.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman?
Okay. This was a tough decision. Uh, I also echo you, Mr. Sullivan was my third choice. I thought he was, um, he interviewed excellently, but if I have to cut it down to two, I agree with what Sarah said, it's, it's great, better to have someone that has experience as a town administrator, especially an interim town administrator, they've had that background, so that unfortunately, well, fortunately, put these two ahead. Um, like Jen said, I mean, either one of these people would do, these gentlemen would do a great job. Um, my pluses for, for, um, Mr. Reed was he's been an intern before, he had mentioned something about working with the, the master plan, so obviously, that was a big, um, plus for me, um, training the employees, um, with how would you handle human resources, you know, issues? Um, you want to save the situation, you want to train the employees if necessary, that type of thing. Um, and the only negative I had was, I believe he said he, when they were asked about his hours, he wanted to work three days a week.
He did.
In the office. Um, that was a, you know, not a red flag, but just a little bit, I was concerned about that, especially coming up budget season, um, for the, then we have to get ready for town meeting. So again, I'm, I'm not sure if we had told, you know, and I, and I shouldn't have thought of it at the time, can you work up to five days from, from January through April or whatever? And it, and I thought of that last night.
Well, I thought he made it clear that he, he couldn't. I thought he made it clear that he, he would possibly be available, you know, remotely, but.
He also said that he was, uh, he would be on call 24/7.
Right.
I mean, that is, that's a big deal, though.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, it's not as if that, he was three days and that was it.
Right.
But I think three days in the office, being in, I think, means more, you know?
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Fantasy, uh, again, great interview. Uh, what I liked about him was the, um, his background. Uh, he was a selectman, a town administrator, and a lawyer. And again, maybe some of the questions that we have to, that we find, uh, K.P. Law, he might not have to go to it.
Or, or, or could perhaps help us before we get to a point where we have to go there?
Correct. So again, that's, you know, not part of the job, but it comes with his experience there. Um, the rural character, I picked up, the thing I picked up on the rural character was, um, I thought it was a great answer, what does rural character mean to you? He said, well, what's important to the town? It's not his decision, you know, his opinion of what rural character meant. It's really what do the townspeople think? And again, other things as well. Um, he, like Jen said, he knows the area. Um, so if I had to choose between the two, my number one would be Mr. Fantasy.
Okay. Well, I, I think the good thing, if, if I could, I think the good thing here is that we all, and I felt, yesterday after the interviews, I didn't, I certainly didn't think we were all gonna come up with the same top two, but I felt there was some people that left the room as clear, clearly had more, had experience that benefited the town of Carver better than some others did. So just to, in an attempt to move this along, and I, it, it appears to me that, that, that three members of the board perhaps favor Mr. Fantasy. So I'm gonna offer a motion that we, uh.
Could I, I, I had one more comment before we?
Okay, sure.
I, I did want to point out, Mr. Belvin said that Mr. Fantasy had more, um, has been doing this sort of thing for longer, but he actually has been a town administrator only since 2001, whereas Mr. Reed has been a town administrator since 1993.
Yeah, I think it was clear that Mr. Reed had more experience as a town administrator.
He does. And my last comment is that I, I, my favorite line from Mr. Reed was, he doesn't feel that, um, whoever comes in to be the ITA shouldn't try to make the town in his own image.
I agree.
I thought that was a big deal to me.
I agree. Well, I, I'm gonna off, make a motion that we offer a Robert Fantasy, uh, the position of interim town administrator based on us, the, our ability to negotiate a, a contract, uh, just to, just to move this along.
I think you, I think three people.
I'll second that motion.
Three people wanted Robert Reed.
I thought, um, it was myself, I think we all felt comfortable with both, but I thought Mr. Belvin favored Mr. Fantasy, Mr. Hoffman favored Mr. Fantasy, and I favored Mr. Fantasy.
Well, you said you favor Robert Reed.
No, I, I, I didn't.
Okay.
No, I, I spoke in favor of both of them. I think they're both excellent. But we, we have a motion and a second, so let's just discuss this motion. If it fails, we will make another motion. I think the good thing is, no matter who we choose, I think we all feel pretty comfortable with whomever, whomever we choose, so. Uh, I, I guess since I made the motion, I'll just say, I thought, and again, I think both of these are excellent candidates. I'd feel comfortable with either one of them sitting over in, in that chair, joining us. I think they could both do an excellent job for the town. I just thought that Mr. Fantasy, Fantasy had a couple of things that put him a little bit ahead. One was, as Mr. Hoffman mentioned, his, his combined experience. I, I thought the fact that he had experience sitting over here as a, as a member of the Select Board, or a selectman, I think, in Kingston, the fact that he was a town administrator, and the fact that he had legal experience really put him ahead. I, I, it might be just be a, a simple thing, but I was really impressed that he took the time to read our financial policies, because that's so important to the town, and he was the only one that did it. Uh, it really struck me that he mentioned meeting with residents. And again, that's a small thing, but I, I think it's an important thing. And the other thing that I didn't mention when I first spoke about him is, uh, And the other thing that I didn't mention when I first spoke about him is, uh, what, to me, one of the questions Mr. Hoffman asked yesterday, what do you feel the, the role of the select board is in working with the interim town administrator? The first thing he said, i- and he stressed the importance of communication. And I think when we had our meeting at the fire station, we talked about our priorities, one of the things we all mentioned was the importance of communication back and forth with the select board. And that was the very first thing he mentioned and he stressed it. So, I thought that was, that was important as, as well. So, again, I, I feel comfortable with both of these folks as, as we always all do, but that's the reason that I put Mr. Fennessy slightly above Mr. Mr. Reed in my mind. And, um, those are just my thoughts. Um, I'd like to hear from the rest of the board.
Well, I'm still in my mind, 'cause they're so equal, but just to be fair, Mr. Reed did mention communication. I wrote to him, when he was asked that question, he said it was no different than with a full-time administrator and communication was key. So, they both did that, 'cause that is so important to us.
Absolutely.
So, mhm.
Actually, he did. Communication is essential and not, he won't do anything that the select board doesn't, okay?
Absolutely. Anything else?
Yeah, as, as well, one of the notes that I added for Mr. Reed was, uh, communication and keep the board up to date before any key decisions, which is important. Again, I, it, this was really a tough decision, the, um, like you said, I think either, with either one, we, we do a, um, we have a great person. Um, I just think the ex, in my personal feeling, just having the other experiences, being a selectman already, uh, the lawyer, town, you know, town administrator and like Sarah had said, he wasn't an interim or, or town administrator as long, um, but I think those other experiences, in my mind at least, um, made him, uh, the top choice for me. And, and again, it might not be much, but the, but the three days a week in the office, um, that, that was mine.
Yeah. I guess the, the three days a week, he did say ideally, but I definitely understand that because Mr. Fennessy did say he could start tomorrow and be full-term, so that was great. But what I think, something else that struck me was when, when Sarah asked the professional accomplishment he was most proud of, it was getting that, the senior center built in Sutton, when the three-member select board kept flip-flopping on support, when that board was going back and forth and there was animosity and difference. It sounded like he has dealt with less than ideal select board situations and was still...
You're talking about Mr. Reed?
Yes, and was still able to get stuff done.
Yeah, I like that.
So, a little bit hit, close to home here, but, uh, but that, in looking at what the town, I mean, what would benefit the town is someone who can work with a board that sometimes isn't on the same page. And I'm sorry to laugh, but, uh, yeah, but...
That's true.
Like I said before, I don't think it's a lose-lose, I think it's a win-win.
I, I, I agree.
One other, one other quick comment and I just wanna make sure that I heard it correctly, that, um, for Mr. Reed, when he said, uh, he really, he likes to work during the winter, um, and my, my, that was one of my negatives I forgot to mention, um, hopefully this, the, the process for the full-time or the permanent town administrator will be fairly quickly, but I just don't know, you know? And again, I thought of the questions to, today instead of yesterday.
None of us know. That, that's right. I think it's a, it's an unknown.
But I'm saying, if it, if it goes until May or June, you know, I, I'm not sure what his...
I heard that as well and I was concerned that, or who knows, like, we don't even know who's gonna apply and I was concerned that, I don't think I wanna go through this process again.
I just didn't know if anyone else picked up on that. I, that was my...
I, I had, you know, I had written that down, I had forgotten it, so I'm, I'm glad you, I'm glad you mentioned it. Um, Ms. Huens, did you wanna?
Well, I, I don't think that's a particularly negative thi, I, I took it as, a lot of people don't, that's the difficult time in a town, that's your budget season and that a lot of people don't want, have to go through that. Um, so I took it as more of a positive that, that he especially likes working during the winter. I don't, I don't think he would, you know, say, here comes summer, I'm not working anymore. I didn't get that in person.
Oh, and again, I just wanted to make, make sure that I heard it, maybe I heard it in the wrong frame.
I'd like to work that situation myself. I'd like to work only during the winter and take this...
Well, again, I don't think that's what he was saying. I, I took it as a positive in that he, he had no problems working through the diffi, the most difficult time of year for a town, which is...
I, I agree.
Budget season.
Yeah. Mr. Belvin, did you wanna offer any comments?
Yeah, I, um, I, I left my notes in, in the hotel, I'm out in the middle of the parking lot, so, sorry, but...
You shouldn't be in the middle of the, you should be at the beach, Bob, not in the parking lot.
This is the closest I'm gonna get right now. Um, so, I like that Mr. Fennessy was local, I like that he was willing to spend the time for Carver. Um, I, the part about being a lawyer and a selectman and a town administrator, those are all positives. So, his overall interview, I think, was great, even though he kinda got a little bit of a hard, harder questions with Sarah at the end than some of the other, um, applicants, but he handled it, he handled it well. Um, so, I just felt he was a very personable person and someone that he'd sit down and talk to and he was gonna think everything over. Um, he was gonna look at things from different perspectives. I think that's big and that's why I'm talking about residents. It's super important that he, he gets it, he gets that working for the town isn't just working for the employees or the town, the, the select board, but it's also working for residents. So, I think that was important, but I think he got it. I think that's what he got about being a servant of the town. So, that's why I picked Mr. Fennessy.
Thank you, Bob. Are there any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second to offer the interim town administrator position to Robert Fennessy, uh, based on, I'm sorry, I offer the interim town administrator position to Robert Fennessy, subject to, uh, successful background check and reference check and obviously, uh, an agree, contract agreeable to the select board. Uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of Mr. Fennessy?
Can I have another minute just to think silently? Just, just give me like literally one minute.
Bob, I hope the weather is well in Hawaii.
Yes. It's a li, it's a little cooler, but it's nice. What did, um, I didn't hear what Jen said.
Jen, Jen asked for a moment to, to think a little bit.
I asked for a moment of silence, thank you for granting it to me. Okay.
All right, are we ready?
I'm ready to...
All right, we have a motion and a second for Mr. Fennessy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Bob, a, a aye.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Fine. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Bob, could you start us off?
Sure. Robert Belvin says aye to Mr. Fennessy.
Okay. Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewins says aye.
Ms. Bogart?
Ms., uh, Ms., Jen Bogart says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right. It is unanimous. Thank you. Um, we need to appoint a negotiating committee to meet with Mr. Fennessy, uh, based on the, the urgency of this matter. Uh, obviously, Mr. Belvin wouldn't really be able to, he's in Hawaii, so I would suggest, and I suggest this only because I think their schedule, if they're willing to do it, their schedule is a little more flexible, I would suggest Ms. Huens and Mr. Hoffman be the negotiating committee, uh, if that's amenable to the board. And again, that's only because I think their schedule is a little more flexible than perhaps the rest of us. Um, and I would urge them to try to, uh, meet with him Monday if possible. I did ask Ms. Weston to post a meeting, uh, for Monday.
It would be an executive session.
Is that a voting clock?
Yeah, it is. I've got, if people are checking their, their calendars to make sure they're available, so it, it will be a motion if they're both available on Monday.
I'm available and I appreciate your asking.
Mr. Hoffman?
I have actual vacations, so I'm available.
All right, so they are, they are both available, so I will, I will make a motion that we appoint, uh, Sarah Hewins and Jim Hoffman as a negotiating committee to meet with Mr., uh, Mr. Fennessy.
I will second that.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Why don't we take a roll call on that too? I don't know if it's necessary, but Bob, why don't you start us off?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewins says aye.
Jen Bogart says aye.
You can vote.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right. It is unanimous. Uh, thank you. Uh, so, that completes our meeting, there's nothing else on our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Bob, enjoy the rest of your vacation.
Bob, one thing.
Yes?
Please. Um, again, I wanna thank, give you a big, personally, um, I, I just, I didn't know, but I just wanna say thank you for taking the effort and the time, I, I really appreciate it, uh, and thank you for the board members, too.
Thank you. And you may, you may have missed it, Bob, because I know at the beginning of the meeting we had a little trouble communicating, but I did the same thing as well. I publicly thanked, uh, Chris Gardner, who, really, Bob, he went over and above, he spent seven, at least seven hours here yesterday, then went back to the studio and got that, got that program up and ready to go, so it, it was really, uh, over and above.
So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Have a good day, Bob.